September 22nd, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome two Simsbury High School students who are here. We will start with the public audience. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Yeah.
The Governor, the citizens, the fiscal, money being transferred from the general fund to special projects not even used in the budget. Money from the general fund is being used for Ethel Walker Consulting Services, $33,000, forest management plan administration, $6,000, park and recreation, open space management appropriated, bike trail, $5,000, totally $49,000. The Board of Selectmen appropriated $35,000 to cover the cost of recreation, short-term repairs. Hiram Peck received $25,000 to revise the zoning regulations. All these expenses were not budgeted, the operating expenses approved by the voters. When the Ethel Walker property was proposed, the taxpayers were never told that there would be an annual operating expenses allocated to the property. This Ethel Walker school does not pay taxes to the town and the taxpayers enrich their endowment fund with millions of dollars, and this improvement will benefit Ethel Walker, where is there civic duty to share the cost? What happens when we lose the Hartford and their tax base? How is the town going to support their excessive need for more and more spending? What happens when the general fund can no longer support the successive spending? The town presently has approximately 190 homes in foreclosure. There are families associated with this number. Perhaps the town should use the Ethel Walker property for a homeless shelter, since the taxpayers will no longer be able to support the expenditures. The Simsbury Farm Special Revenue Fund has lost $200,000 this fiscal year. How can the Recreation Department ask the taxpayers to support a golf course that loses money year after year? The town has suggested that many of the town assets should be sold. Maybe it is time for the golf course to be sold or contracted to a golf management team. Money should not be allocated to the memorial pool until it is decided whether to continue its use. Excuse me.
Thank you.
I'll wait until he's finished delivering the news. Okay?
Thank you.
I recently attended the farmer's market in Simsbury, and it appears that there are fewer and fewer tents and very little foot traffic. Has this become a total failure? I also attended September Fest in the home improvement area and noticed that there were fewer tents and not as much traffic as in the past. The home improvement area was in the back of the tents with September Fest, mostly unnoticed by the people. There wasn't any benefit to the business, who paid $250 to $350 for tents. According to the Hartford Current, the medical marijuana dispensaries will be up and running shortly. Since medical marijuana is now legal, what is the town's policy on employees coming to work under the influence of medical marijuana? How is the town going to test for legal marijuana consumption? A recent Hartford article study, a recent article quote, "Study: Daily Pot Use Posits Risk to Teens." It states, and I quote, "Policymakers need to be aware that early use of cannabis is associated with a range of negative outcomes for young adults that affect their health, well-being, and also their achievements," end quote. Was Selectman Mary Glassman aware of these findings when the pot factory was approved in Simsbury? In Simsbury, the Simsbury Police has recently arrested Kenneth A. Brothers. A Simsbury resident was arrested for operating a meth lab in his home at 10D Herman Drive. Is Simsbury breaking bad? Brothers, who also arrested on two counts of criminal possession of firearm, first-degree reckless endangerment, three counts of various charges of drug selling, operating a drug factory, three counts of various charges of drug possession, possession of marijuana, violating regulations on restricted substances, possession of heroin. He is charged with nine felony arrests. Brother's home at 10D Herman Drive is in an industrial area. The mailbox at 10D has a sign for an armor seal business. How can brothers have a meth lab and marijuana plants in his room without anyone noticing this activity? The sign on the door at 10D says, quote, "Ken Brothers, Small Equipment Repair," end quote, and his phone number. Is this in violation of the zoning regulations? Where was the town oversight? Who inspected the property? It appears that the property has many barrels and with some chemicals and rusty trailer and other rubbish on the property. The town and DEEP should immediately inspect the property so the owners can clean up the mess. According to the police arrest log, there are many Simsbury residents that are addicted to heroin and other drugs. Since the heroin addiction is so great and the habit is in need of money, many homes, businesses, and cars have been burglarized. Many of the larceny and burglary complaints have increased with the increased addiction to heroin and other drugs. Recently, two cars had windows smashed at the Farmington Valley Racquet Club. Simsbury residents should keep their personal properties safe. Recently, this Ford voted to scale back the hours of Town Hall on Friday from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. On Monday, the town remains open until 7:00 p.m. The taxpayers of Simsbury are paying for employees to work fewer hours with any reductions in salaries. The past practice was that the department head should work 40 hours and all others 35 hours. The pseudo-town manager, Tom Cook, has given himself a $10,000 increase in salary and his assistant, Sean Kimble, received a $20,000 increase that was not budgeted in the approved taxpayers.
Thank you.
The first elective, I had to wait for Tom Cook to give out the thing. The first elective position was reduced. The first elected Mary Glassman has not had her salary reduced from $113,000. Salaries have increased, working hours decreased, and services to the taxpayers have been reduced. Why aren't the employees working for us? As a result of the consultants' report, the first elective is a part-time position with a reduced salary. If first elected Mary Glassman does not run in this newly created position, will selectmen Lisa Hevener run for selectman? I would like to report that Joe Grace has continued to coach the football team, although there are allegations that when he was head coach, at least four players were hit by Coach Grace. How can the Board of Education ignore the reality that Coach Grace hit football players? Is the Board of Education condoning this aggressive behavior? And I would like to report that I have not heard the opinion from Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo on the alleged violation of 33 Canal Street that the residence is not in compliance with an R-15 resident zone and State Representative John Hampton rents a room in the medical building. I want to thank you for letting me add that, and I will put my comments on www.simsbury.com. Simsbury Patch, now I have a new one, you're so lucky, simsbury.com forum, the topics.
Thank you.
So you can review my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening.
Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. There's so many negative things going on in town. It's disheartening and time and time. But let me start out with a few of the brighter things that are going on in town. The Simsbury Veterans Memorial Fund has reached their one-third, and frankly, I'm disappointed because they're only one-third, and here we have Veterans Day or Armistice Day on the 11th, and it seems that I was hoping that they would raise the entire amount, but they haven't. But for those in Simsbury, if you want to send in 100 or 50 or $5, send it off to the Simsbury Veterans Memorial Fund, American Legion Post 84, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 1926, Post Office Box 1101, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070. And hopefully that will get to them, and you'll have a veterans memorial which will go back from the present wars all the way back to the French and Indian War. Now, having said that, I'd just like to more or less take two seconds. I read an article today in the, I received my DAV magazine, Disabled American Veterans Magazine. I received it today, and in going over, I read an article that I'm really upset with. Here we have seven Democratic representatives from Connecticut, two senators and five congressmen, including Representative Estes, the lady from Simsbury, the 5th District, that in the recent two years, it's disgusting what's going on. But let me read this article that the veterans are sending out to people. Here, it's Veterans Unity Needed. The front cover of the new DAV magazine shows an article titled "The Access Crisis," listing problems such as ignored recommendations, secret waiting lists, sound familiar? And prompt changes at the congressional hearing yesterday. One of the whistleblowers summed all this up as a culture of corruption that is system-wide. I think another term for that is criminal enterprise. Is this the America we fought to defend? Who can fix this? We need to pull together. And we have a Congress that allowed this thing to go year after year after year, and it's wrong, and I wanted to mention that to you. And each, and these veterans that are coming back, they don't think too much of us, let me tell you, because they think every politician that's walking is crooked. Now, having said that, getting back to the marijuana issue. When the marijuana thing came in, I said we needed an investigation. To date, you people haven't done one thing. You're remiss, in my opinion, in your duties as selectmen. This marijuana facility that starts sales this week or next week is encouraging our youth, is encouraging the population to do these things. Now, this is no accident down at the industrial park with this Mr. Brothers. It's no accident. The DA, DAE followed him around, but my thing is this. I stood in front of you peoples when you debated the public safety issue, and you came in lower than it should have been, and I said, "We need two additional policemen." You never gave them to us. It wasn't Bob Kalishman asking, it was the people of Simsbury. And now it's coming into fruition where you don't have the number of policemen to go out and protect the community against these nuts. And the fellow that had this operation, running it, he was not only making synthetic drugs, he had, he had, he had a pistol, and if you know anything about this chemical, it's very volatile. And if you walk in there and light a cigarette, or somebody flicks on a heating system, you're going to blow the thing up. So whose life are you endangering, Ms. Glassman? Whose lives are you endangering? You're endangering the lives of the citizens of Simsbury. And what happened? We let Mr. Beach go. Maybe Mr. Beach would have gone down and detected what was going on in that facility, because when the smell and everything, that thing doesn't exist. People know it. They come in and out of there, they can smell it. Something's wrong in this town. And it, and I, and before, I used to say the town is bordering on corruption. I'm beginning to form the opinion that the town is corrupt. When you have marijuana situation going on, a factory that Ensign Bickford knows is going on, the Board of Selectmen knew it was going on, the Board of Zoning gives it their approval, and, and not one person went to the hearing. They had the hearing, wouldn't it, 12 o'clock midnight? No advertising on it, no nothing. They slipped it through. Is this coming out of the governor's office? Somebody's telling me that the lawyers at Pullman and Conley are representing some of these drug companies. Is that true? And if it is, you should tell us. That's the information I have, that's my opinion, that we have lawyers from Pullman and Conley that represent this, this, these drug fellows from Greenwich. And now, and then, and then the concluding thing is, right, the real thing that really breaks you up and makes you cry is you have this thing, Mr. Roland, twice. He has, he bit, he has bitten the apple twice now. What are we going to do about it? And if this, and you can't tell me that in Hartford, at that state house, they didn't know what was going on with him, not only the first time, but the second time. That's what I mean by corruption. If you know it exists, stop it. And you have the same thing going on with, with going. Then go to the 5th District, let's go to the 5th Congressional District, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Donovan, he's never been, never been convicted.
If you could summarize, Mr. Kalishman.
I will summarize.
It's been six minutes, almost seven minutes.
My summary is this, that the 5th Congressional District is crooked. When is this Board of Selectmen and the delegates that are going to these conventions selecting these delegates, when are you going to stop selecting these crooked people? The last one we correct, and she's going to jail with Mr. Roland, is Ms. Estes, not Ms. Estes, Ms. Lisa Wilson-Foley, right? And for my Democratic friends who sit here, right, are you aware that she still sits on the Republican Town Committee, and she's making decisions for you up here? She still sits on the committee. I have the list the other day. Ms. Lisa Wilson-Foley is a member of the Republican Town Committee. When are we going to clean up the corruption?
Thank you.
It's not only Democrats, it's Republicans.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments.
And something should be done.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is John Ritson. I'm the manager of RC Connectors LLC, and I have an item, RC Connectors has an item on for a tax abatement, and I'm here to answer any questions on that application. I also have, I don't know if you've received this, but I did print the statute 12-65B, which I think has the relevant state of statutes requirements that I think will answer a few questions that were raised by the subcommittee. So I'm here for any questions, and if you need copies, I have it right there.
Thank you, Mr. Ritson.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Charles Houlihan, Somerset Lane. I want to speak on the tax abatement issue, but I would like to express my appreciation for the selectmen, who listen to a great deal of commentary over things that they have nothing to do with, can't possibly affect, and, and listen to a great deal of exaggerations about some of the items that are going on in town, and we appreciate your tolerance and patience on the board. The, but I'd like to talk about the tax abatement program, as I understand it, the committee that's charged with this has, has voted to deny the tax abatement for Mr. Ritson's project. Now, the policy as it exists has different items, and the apartment building that has been built in front of the Hartford fits under one of the items as other uses. And our policy says that it has to be any of the uses that are allowed by the Connecticut General Statutes. The Connecticut General Statutes allow tax abatements for permanent residential facilities. And so Mr. Ritson's apartment complex fits within the statute and therefore within the town tax abatement program. It also provides that the tax abatement can be given prior to construction, not only after construction for real estate development. And I mention that because Mr. Ritson, as part of his financing plan, had previously applied to the town and had asked, under the statute, for, for approval, and was told that the town's policy is that it will not approve the incentive, the abatement, prior to construction, but only after construction. So the, whether that is, the policy as it's affected seems to be somewhat different than what the Board of Selectmen originally passed, because if they're doing a development, it makes the most sense for a developer to receive that abatement.
Excuse me, Mrs. Cog. Yep. Any, everybody's allowed to say what they want as evidenced by the previous speaker. So please, if I could have some order, I don't, please.
And so the, the policy as it's been administered to this, where it could have been considered and should have been considered under this policy at an earlier time when he was originally obtaining financing, is, has been changed in practice, so he has to come in after the fact. I mention that because one analysis of the, his application is, well, you know, he should have come in before, and then he was turned down, which was because of the application of the policy, and maybe he didn't really need it anyways, which makes it very difficult, I think, for developers, and it also communicates that the tax abatement program is discretionary, and it's nothing that anybody can count on. Perhaps that's the policy, but it, as it's used in other towns who are competing for other real estate development, it's a problem because it's regular, it's a regular expected part of the financing, and we have taken away some of the benefits of the tax abatement program by saying you have to build it first without assurance that it's coming, and then even if it comes, well, then maybe we'll say you don't need it because you've already got it built. It's a catch-22 situation. One of the criteria to approve this is there have to be other benefits for the town, and I would suggest a few things. Number one, the grand list of town of Simsbury has gone up by $3 million for this project. Number two, there's going to be car tax revenue coming in. There'll be approximately 24 to 48 cars serving that facility. Those car taxes would not otherwise be available. And three, he's going to be required to invest $80,000 for the sewer connection, which helps amortize our investment with the sewer system. So I think that there are a number of benefits. The recommendation that was given to you concluded that there was no clean net benefit to the town of Simsbury, and I would suggest that the increase in the grand list, the car tax revenue, and the sewer contribution are all clear net benefits to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Cog.
And one last comment, is it in the plan of development? There's a lot of discussion about having dense, denser residential development in the town, particularly in that area where it's not clear what the future is, and that is an evolving area, as you see regularly, and suggests that it's consistent with the plan of development, that this type of investment be supported.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? I say none. I want to thank everybody for their comments. We appreciate your feedback and input. I just have a few announcements tonight. I just wanted to announce that there is a Simsbury Touch a Truck event this Saturday, 27th. The Department of Public Works and Culture Parks and Rec will hold, will bring snowplows, front-end loaders, backhoe, excavators, street sweeper, and more to Boy Scout Hall this Saturday so children can see what it's like to be at the wheel. The event runs from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and it's co-sponsored by the Simsbury Public Library. There'll be activity for kids and prizes and questions about the trucks, and I'd like to thank our staff, Tom Roy, Jerry Tonner, Lisa Kareem, and their staff for putting together this wonderful event. I also want to announce a veterans appreciation lunch, which will be held on September 30th at Eno Memorial Hall. We'll be honoring all of the town's resident veterans with a special lunch on September 30th from noon to 1:30 at Eno. Veterans and a guest are invited free of charge. We would like reservations in advance so we know how much food to order, and that can be done at the Simsbury Senior Center at 860-658-3273. I'd like to thank our senior center staff for doing a good job in helping us honor and recognize our heroic individuals who served and sacrificed to keep our country safe. So I want to thank everybody and hope that our veterans will participate. I want to also announce that paint recycling begins on October 1st. The Board of Selectmen approved the town of Simsbury's bulky waste recycling facility as the site of the paint, Free Paint Recycling Center. If you're a Simsbury resident and you have a valid permit for the bulky waste recycling facility, and you have old cans of paint sitting in your garage, you can bring them in beginning October 1st. You will need to have a valid permit, and you also can bring in paint, primers, stains, sealers, and clear coatings. Products must be in their original containers, and they have to have their original label and a secure lid, and must be smaller than five gallons in size. I also wanted to congratulate Lisa Gray, who has been appointed Executive Director of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. She began on, she began her effective date on September 12th, and Lisa, who many of us know her through her service as town clerk to our boards and commissions, is a terrific choice. She has her own business in the travel consulting business, and has been a Simsbury resident and has been very active in the chamber for more than eight years, and she's been a resident Simsbury for more than 14 years. She also has the added pleasure of being married to our own Officer Gary Gray, so we want to congratulate and welcome Lisa to the chamber. I also want to announce that Solarise Simsbury Program ends tomorrow, September 23rd. Simsbury homeowners have until tomorrow to take part in a solar installation under the fees of the Solarise Simsbury Program. This is a state program that Simsbury applied for, and we were awarded the contract for. There are about 60 homeowners who have signed contracts for solar panels, and I want to remind those who are considering the program, that includes a set discounted price, which is 20% below what the market price is, and there are financing options offered by Energize Connecticut that help apply for the installation costs. If you'd like more information, you can contact the town of Simsbury and our Public Works Department. And finally, I wanted to report to the Board of Selectmen that approved the CCM Prescription Discount Drug Program. We were one of the first towns to take part in the program when we heard about it. Well, since the town adopted the program in 2012, the town of Simsbury has received more than $108,000 in savings for our residents and processing more than 1,900 claims. The program gives Simsbury residents who are without health insurance or who do not have adequate health insurance the ability to purchase medications at a reduced cost. The program is providing an average savings of 50% off the retail price of prescriptions. We have free cards available, and this is a free program, and those cards are available at Town Hall or at Eno Memorial Hall. They are also available online, and you can print a card, which is at www.ctrxdiscountcard.com, and as soon as you print the card, it is immediately effective. So I just wanted to let the board know that our residents are taking advantage of it, and it is saving significant amount of money. Okay, we'll move now to our action items. The first is approval of the tax refunds. These are a total of $5,369.75 worth of refunds. These have all been reviewed and have been recommended by our tax collector, and as you know, the Board of Selectmen is the only legislative body that can refund taxes in the town of Simsbury. Can I have a motion? I'll move that second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is to approve a recommendation, which is to deny a tax abatement application request from RC Connectors for the property located at 144-146 Hot Meadow Street. This is a tax abatement requested for 24 luxury apartments at 144-146 Hot Meadow Street, and as you heard earlier, Mr. Ritson is here, and we want to thank you for your investment in our town, and we appreciate your being here tonight to answer any questions. Hiram Peck is here to answer any questions. The Business Development Committee did review the request, and we appreciate the investment. The request does differ from what the state statute allows, and the committee spent a lot of time discussing the application. Just a couple highlights, and then I'll turn it over to Hiram. The state statute and the town of Simsbury's resolution does allow for, it does say that the town may give a tax abatement, it does not require a tax abatement. I think you heard earlier that the process has been to award the abatement after the construction, not before, and that was a policy of the town. I think the, the committee, after careful review and consideration, felt that this was the first application for residential development, and they were concerned about offering tax abatements for residential development, particularly because there's no limit, someone could build a one-family house and get a tax abatement, two-family house, there was no provision as to what residential development tax abatements could be. In the past, the tax abatement has been used solely for commercial development, so the subcommittee felt strongly that that was the intent in originally passing it. There were a number of valid points, and many that were raised earlier this evening, and as a result, the board, the subcommittee voted to revise the tax abatement program, and we'll come back to this board in two weeks with a recommendation for changes to the tax abatement program. We are concerned, as you heard earlier, that the tax abatement is not done prior to construction. It should be done prior to construction, we felt. We felt that tax abatement should not be used for residential development. There's a number of residential There's a number of residential development that the town felt that we want to encourage commercial development, not residential, and so the board will go back and look at revising that. And we also have solicited and received all of the tax abatement programs offered in Connecticut through CCM, so we'll be reviewing those recommendations and providing all that information back to the board in two weeks. So we'll be ready to go in two weeks in our next Board of Selectmen meeting, so. Hiram, I don't know if you wanted to add any other information?
I'll show them questions, ma'am.
Okay, questions of the board? Mike, you're thinking about...
I'm trying to frame the question. The state municipal abatement and the state regulation does allow for residential party residential property. I can understand the logic to a point of not wanting to put in residential developments. On the other hand, people need a place to live, and if we want to be live, work, play kind of town, then they have to have somewhere to live. If we end up approving approving the rejection, could Mr. Ritson then come back, assuming the new regulations apply, and reapply?
There's no prejudice, so the there would be no prohibition to come back and reapply. I think one of the questions that the committee raised is if you allow residential tax abatement. And again, the purpose of a tax abatement is to encourage certain types of development. Also, it pushes the taxes that that development would have paid onto the other taxpayers, so it's done very judiciously because someone has to make up that taxes. I think the committee also felt that, do you want to encourage single-family units? So everybody who builds a new house in Simsbury will get a tax abatement?
I'm not heading down that road. I'm just asking the questions.
And I'm just telling you, the questions that were raised, exactly what you're saying, you know, you know, if you're allowing, is it one unit? Is it two units? Is it 24 units? Is it 60 units? And I think because this was the first residential application, when we went back and looked at the abatements that have been approved in the past, it was always to encourage jobs, was encourage growth. Some of the factors, if you looked at the town resolution, the town will consider, if you look at the resolution itself, it says, "The town will consider offering tax abatements to the following qualifying businesses," and outlines manufacturing firms, "business considering establishing corporate headquarters," "other uses that fit the criteria set forth." So technically, "other uses" means anything, and that's what this application came in under. But the board felt that when you looked at the rest of the at the at the tax abatement program, it also points out the guidelines that apparent or subsidiary of some application have a satisfactory record of environmental compliance by the DEP. That indicates that it's a commercial property. The second point says applications must have a solid financial base and growth potential. That seems to indicate not residential, because residential is built, and then that's it. And then the third says applications must be committed to invest $100,000 more in new expanded or rehabilitated facilities, and certainly the investment we're very grateful for does does is significant. So that's the reasons that the board felt that they would not recommend to the Board of Selectmen approving the tax abatement at this time.
Hey, just a technical question. Do we have to vote on that, or does someone have to move to approve the tax abatement? If we take no action, there it is not approved? Or do we have to take a motion on the recommendation? Yea or nay?
The the resolution said that the Business Development Committee needed to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. That's why it's before you.
But if we could take no action, then the tax abatement is not granted. We don't have to vote to...
Correct. You'd have to actively approve the abatement for it to take effect.
But we don't have to vote to deny it?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Questions?
Just comments that the work actually on a couple of different levels, this speaks to a lot of the work that's being done by the task force and has been for the past couple of months. And this is where it strikes me on a couple of different levels. We had a presentation from Yvonne Klein, the Commissioner of the Department of Housing, who spoke to the need for one- and two-bedroom units in our town and market rate more so. But I think just an analysis of the inventory we have was is interesting sort of bit of information that I was looking to as I was deliberating over some of this information. And the program subcommittee of the task force is actually looking to evaluate the tax abatement program. It is currently evaluating to make three financial incentive recommendations to eventually come to before the Board of Selectmen, but through the Economic Development Commission, so.
We haven't decided on how many recommendations to make.
The goal that was set forth as that short-term goal that we reviewed last at last week's meeting, I know you're a part of that group, so you were able to take on that discussion outside of the larger groups meeting, but I think we were thinking that it would be, you know, looking towards bringing forward a couple of different options, possibly in addition to the tax abatement program, but at a minimum to look at the program in its entirety. So I'm looking forward to some of that information coming out of that board. And the other work of the marketing group is looking to putting together, or excuse me, also the programs group criteria for the EDC, and it dawns on me that it would be appropriate for the Economic Development Commission to look at projects as they come in and say, hey, you know what? This does a lot of the things that the policy for the Business Development Committee is looking for, and so if a project came forward, they might be able to...
Are you saying the Economic Development Commission should review tax abatement program?
No, I think what it would would help bolster and sort of aid in the process is if the development came in and they were reviewing it, that they could say, in the way that a project is looking for a recommendation to go back to zoning from the EDC or go back to planning from the EDC, that the EDC could also say to the Business Development Committee, this project is worth looking at for for tax abatement. So just another sort of measurable criteria of what makes a good project for our town and, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd look to see the recommendation because that might add another layer, and also, that's not the job of the Economic Development Commission to force some applications and not others. I don't know which applications would go through. So that could be used inappropriately.
And the point of it is, is I think that right now, the task force is looking at criterias, and so the fact that development can take advantage of this program, and it's something that the Economic Development Commission could help sort of support in order to support projects moving forward in the same way that they write recommendations to the zoning commission. So there's a lot of pieces to this that I thought made me realize that this policy is maybe a bit more broad, and that's why we're having some struggles with, you know, how this fits into it right now. And so I think that's what I'm coming away with, I think, on this in the end, is the intent behind the policy and what it's been used for in the past, and keeping something in line with those things, even given some of the other things that we're trying to achieve in town. So I was long-winded, but that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to thank Mr. [inaudible] for coming in and sharing your comments. I appreciate that, and Mr. Ritson for your development and your patience in going through this process. And I agree with the recommendation coming forward because I think we do have a somewhat ambiguous situation here, and I think that to not follow the recommendation of our Business Development Committee would be, you know, we would be remiss in that, and they've carefully reviewed it, and I think that we should abide by their decision.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Lisa?
I want to thank you for taking that under advisement. The one thing we have looked at, the Economic Development Committee, and Mr. Ritson's point is the tax abatements are given to encourage development that wouldn't otherwise come, so it makes no sense to offer it at the end, and that's puts him in an awkward situation. It's a terrible thing to do to our businesses. At the same time, I think we can be more, when it says other, we have the ability to or we may not, after consulting with counsel, what the things we can consider and whether we can add criteria to this. If it's manufacturing use, can we limit it to what kind of manufacturing we want? And I don't know. That's a legal question, so I'd encourage you to consult with counsel as we do this and have them take a hard look as well, because there are certain things that we are not even allowed to consider by law.
Exactly. And I think the other uses was designed to give flexibility to a town to do exactly what you said, Lisa, to encourage development to come that the town feels it's appropriate. I think any tax abatement for residential, we'd have to calculate what the loss of those taxes will be for every single residential unit that's being built, and there's a number of residential units being built, so I think we wanted to cautiously, you know, look at that before we allow residential to go forward. So that's something we'll be looking at. So at this point, the board doesn't need to take action unless the board wants to take action. Is there any motion before the board? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the resolution allowing the First Selectmen to accept historic document preservation grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Connecticut State Library. This will be, we did receive this grant. The funds will include microfilming, our map surveys for security backup scanning images, and I want to thank Carol and Kylie for applying for this funding. We do need to read the resolution to the record at this time.
That would be Cheryl.
Oh, sure. Happy to. Do we need a motion?
Yes. You can move the resolution.
I move that the board adopt the resolution worded as follows. Resolve that Mary Glassman, First Selectmen of the Town of Simsbury, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an historic documents preservation grant.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed, the motion carries. Next is to accept a donation of $3,500 from Hartford Foundation for Public Giving with our thanks to support our programs, including Cheese Day, Bread Day, and the Food Closet programs, which assist our residents in Simsbury. Again, all those programs are available free of charge to our residents through our Social Services Department. Can I have a motion to accept?
She'll move.
Thank you.
Second?
Any questions? All in favor? So passed. Thank you very much. Next item is an amendment to the June 23, 2014 resolution in connection with the school security project grants. Burke LeClaire, the Business Manager for Simsbury Public Schools, is here in case the board has any questions. Welcome, Burke, and thank you for being here. This is language changes that has been requested through discussions with the state of Connecticut in order to qualify for the grants. My understanding is, as of this afternoon, the language discussions between the Town, Board of Ad, and state of Connecticut have progressed to the point where I believe we only need to move item number D and not E. Is that correct?
We read what was submitted after June 23rd and realized that it was just fine in section A, but they've been looking very, very carefully. They have very particular authorizations that they would like to see, and it's a very technical request, and we thank you for your patience.
We want you to get your money and get the project moving, so. Thank you for being here. At this time, we would need a motion to amend the resolution, and I would ask that the mover read the resolution into the record. Would anyone like to move that?
I'll do my pen and...
Thank you. Welcome.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen approve the following resolution. Move to amend the resolution of June 23, 2014, that the Board of Selectmen hereby establishes the permanent public building committee as the building committee to the proposed main office security and interior hallway improvement project at Henry James Memorial School and to the proposed main office security project at Squadron Line School, and further authorizes the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed main office security and interior hallway improvement project at Henry James Memorial School and to the proposed main office security project at Squadron Line School.
Thank you. Nicely done. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question for Burke. I'm the liaison to the public building committee, and I am assuming that this doesn't negate any of the work that the committee has done so far on these projects, either in planning or approving any technical...
No, we're fine. I mean, the prior motion talked about charging the public building committee with design and construction oversight, and essentially, the state really wants this particular language that was too broad.
So there's no additional work that the public building committee would have to do in addition to what it's already done?
No.
Thank you. And more importantly, no additional money.
We can wait for a change.
Right. We don't want to do that. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second with no further questions. All in favor? Any opposed, the motion carries. Next item I will recuse myself from and ask the Board of Selectmen to proceed. Excuse me.
Okay, so our item, next item on the agenda, it was before us on October 11th, and at that time, excuse me, August 11th, I'm trying to flash us forward, and at that time, the board had some questions in regards to the requested action for an abatement, and so I think everyone's had a chance to read one of the questions, which was around what other projects in town could possibly come forward if we were to approve that abatement, because they have the same sort of scenario for themselves. They fell outside that window, and so that amount of money over a 10-year abatement period would be $18,965. So just to let folks know that that's was one of the questions we asked, and then Bob, we had just wanted to have you come in and also talk, speak to any other questions the board may have before they made some final decisions. So I'll open up for questions. Going once?
Okay, I'll ask her. I don't want Bob to feel ignored.
Like he made the trip for nothing.
I know. I guess I was a little confused by the the total over the 10-year abatement period. That was for other projects that might apply for the abatement that have not so far?
Is that the information that David gave you?
Yes. Yeah.
My understanding is his calculations related to this property tax record. I'm looking at a spreadsheet that he prepared.
Yep. Right.
I think that that ties back. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was looking at the memo dated September 17th.
I don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this was the one I was just referring to with the assistance of the Building Department. It says, "Three other installations were found." So I think what he did at our request is he went back and found that there were three other projects that had had solar installation that were currently on the tax rolls. And so he was saying that using the same calculation, Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, using the same calculation over that 10-year period, he came up with that total. So really, what I think, at least I was asking for in asking that question was, we're being asked to approve $79,000 for CTEC, but if those other group folks were to come forward, we could be looking at an additional almost $19,000.
Right. That's what I wanted to know. And you would see no legal impediment to those other properties coming forward?
No, if they fall within the window, no, but I also don't think there's any precedential value. If you approve this one, I think you have the right to deny the other one and vice versa. There's no precedent because each one is considered on its facts. For instance, you could find that this particular installation, because it is on a town-owned building and is part of a leased premises that serves the public in one way or another, I mean, you could make distinctions. I'm just giving you possible distinction you could make that would allow you to distinguish between one installation or another if you choose to do it.
But the equipment itself isn't owned by the town.
The equipment is not owned by the town, and I also checked the agreement between ISCC LLC and CTEC, and it's very clear to me in the agreement that CTEC as the so-called provider in the agreement is responsible for the payment of property tax. So it's not ISCC LLC that will pay these taxes.
I think that's an important distinction.
Thank you for finding that information.
Would you see any of those other property owners coming forward and finding that we had some preferential treatment of?
Well, I'm not...
Would that be detrimental to our...
I don't know the nature of the other providers, and whether two or three of them, they must be much smaller if the taxes are that much less. Again, in this particular instance, the town was involved in it really from the beginning. I went back and went through the file, and you'll recall, you approved the resolution to, under the ground lease, to allow it to be installed in the first place. The agreement says... The agreement says that if for any reason the ground lease goes away, or is canceled, or they default, then you own the rights under the agreement. So, there's a relationship between the town, ISCC, and this provider that isn't present with the other potential applicants for the tax abatement.
I see.
And it's a much larger facility with a much larger capacity.
Lisa, could you talk a little bit about the benefits of the solar power? So, it's on, it's owned by C-Tech. C-Tech pays the property taxes on it. Presumably, if there's stuff that goes back to the grid, they get the benefit of...
There's no, by definition, there can't be any electricity going back to the grid. That's...
So, who gets the benefit of the...
ISCC, because they entered into an agreement with C-Tech for basically a flat rate for the electricity that the facility produces.
So, how...
The benefit of the tax savings goes to both ISCC and some portion of it to C-Tech, otherwise they wouldn't have done it. Why they're not...
How does it go to ISCC? Can you explain that?
By reducing their energy costs.
The rebate reduces their energy costs?
No, I'm not familiar with the rebate. The rebate, I think, goes to C-Tech, but the rate that ISCC pays for the electricity presumably is lower than the CLMP rate because they're getting it off of this facility.
So, they get the benefit of the lower rate?
Yes.
Yes.
But they've already negotiated their rate.
They have.
So, that's already done, whether they get the rebate or not.
Correct. Now, I don't know, I don't know whether that was in anticipation of the tax, this being tax exempt, because there was a lot of discussion at the time in the legislature and elsewhere, I guess, within the industry, that the legislature was going to make these type of installations tax exempt, and in fact, they did. As the statute reads, if they put it in, if it was installed after January 1st, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
I think that's...
That's unfortunate.
And I, if you have a comment, I just, that's where I think I have the biggest problem with this, is that, you know, people within their industries have to know things that are impacting their industry. I mean, whether it be workforce, whether it be competition, whether it be legislation, and I'm just, I'm hard pressed that these folks could have been that close to this and not have known that that was going to happen.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
I know as the statute reads the way it reads, and it's, you got to read it a few times to really get it all, but if it were residential, it would be tax exempt. If it were distressed municipality, be tax exempt. If we're after January 1st, it would be, excuse me, after, yeah, tax exempt, and this window creates this ability for the legislative body to give a tax abatement, which is different than a tax exemption. It's odd the way they wrote it, but...
But they're essentially providing a service, they're providing a product, you know, which they're getting paid for, and I have a hard time, you know, making an exception for that.
Lisa, you want to follow?
Yeah. Is there anything that prevents us from referring this to the Business Development Committee? We just went through an abatement process. We have a committee set up to look for that. To me, I know it's for a different statutory program, but it doesn't make sense to refer it there.
It's up to you whether it makes sense or not, but there's nothing prohibiting you from doing that, and having them, that committee...
Who is knowledgeable with the criteria used and the benefit to the town, and who deals with this on a regular basis. To me, I would find that beneficial.
Can we technically refer, in other words, this just goes back to our last conversation. I don't know that we can refer it to them as much as we can say. If we're not going to grant it, they, of course, like any business, have the option to go before them, but...
I think you could ask them to look at it and run it through the same reviews they, because they, their charge is really 12-65B tax abatements under that statute, which has to do with real estate improvements in real estate, and you just had a big discussion about that, and this is a different statute. This is under the tax exemption statute, but it is in fact an abatement. It's not exactly what they do, because they're under 12-65B, applying the criteria that you put together, this board put together many years ago, that you're now looking to revisit. But one of the benefits of that would be they could have C-Tech come in and put hard numbers to all this and tell the committee, almost like a fact-finding opportunity, well, how much are you making with the taxes? How much, you know, are you underwater if you have to pay taxes? And that's all this information that I don't know, but maybe...
I see what you're saying. I think I misunderstood. You were saying not refer them to it, but make a referral to them to come back to us.
Yes, yes, yes.
As a fact-finding group that can come back with hard numbers, like you know how much taxes you're giving up according to David's spreadsheet, but what's the benefit of doing that? You know, are they going to make more profit, or are they going to, is it unviab, not viable without this? I mean, you don't...
I guess my problem with that is, this is a done deal. There are no employees. This is a piece of hardware on top of a building. This is not a business development.
That's true.
I think, given what we just discussed, that doesn't fit any of the business development criteria we just had a lengthy discussion about.
Mike, you have a comment?
I'm a little bothered by this because part of my job during the day is to pay attention to laws and make sure I'm complying with them and everything else, and somebody was using the wrong calendar because they weren't even close. And, you know, it's, I'm very sorry for that, and I kind of feel goofy saying that because I'm talking to them about putting solar in my house, so hopefully that doesn't go awry. But maybe I shouldn't say that. No, but I'm really having a difficult time with this, to come in after the fact, and they've already done all the work. I have absolutely no problem having the Business Development Committee come back with some thoughts, suggestions, and everything, but I'm really not in favor of this, I have to be honest.
I have a problem with the other layer. I mean, I just think we're...
Prolonging the inevitable.
Prolonging this for, you know, reasons that don't fit any of the criteria that we've discussed. I mean, if, you know, whether or not they have a viable business plan is not, you know, something that we should be in the business of picking winners and losers, you know, that's, that's not what we do. This isn't something that's in the development phase. This isn't, you know, anything that's going to happen. This has already happened.
Tax abatements are difficult for all the reasons you're pointing out. The statutes permit them, but they don't give you a heck of a lot of guidance in how to apply them, and what criteria and what...
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Cheryl. I think if that group wants to go before the tax abatement business, you know, the business committee to do that, they certainly have the right, like any other business, to do that, but our, you know, request right now is to make, is, you know, a motion to approve this or not, and so...
Is it a motion to, do we have to take any action?
You're not, no, you're not obligated. It's on your agenda for action, I believe.
So, if we take no action similar to the...
You approve a resolution, you could make a motion to deny the request for an abatement. That would at least reflect in your minutes that you took action on it. Otherwise, it just kind of carries on, I guess.
Well, because if they don't take the further step, then it's not resolved.
I think this is similar to the question, Lisa, you said, had about the previous vote, we don't have to, we don't have to...
I guess, if you don't mind, I'll make the motion to refer to the Business Development Committee, because I think there is room for fact-finding, but, and I think we would benefit from following the same process every time we consider one of these and looking at, so I'll put that motion out there.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
I think that's up to the applicant. I mean, I don't think we get to tell them whether they go before the Business Development Committee or not. I mean, that's...
I'd have to agree with that. I think it's our job as the board of selectmen to make a decision. I think I understand the point that Lisa made and that Nancy did, but I think it's our job to say yea or nay.
I agree. I just think with the benefit of all the facts, and I don't feel like I have all the facts yet, especially because it is a town building, and I just want to understand what, if there's any benefit to the town at all through this process, because if, I hope C-Tech doesn't go under, but if it does, we then own the building and the solar panels. Is that right?
No, no. C-Tech always owns the solar panels, and if they were to dissolve or merge, or whoever their successor was, would take title to this installation.
And pay the taxes on?
And be responsible.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
The town would get the advantage of the agreement with C-Tech if, and, you know, if it ever came to pass in the next 15 years that the town were to take possession of the skating center, but that's not even at issue here, really.
Right. Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second for referral to the business subcommittee.
I didn't move the motion.
Oh, Lisa, do you want to repeat your...
I made the motion to ask for the opinion of the Business Development Committee on whether to award the...
And I did second that. Okay. So, for the motion that's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, that motion does not pass. Okay, and any other motions that would be made on this, or as we said, we don't have to, so we could just leave it as...
I think we owe a tune to make a motion. I really do feel that way. I would make a motion that we deny the request from C-Tech, PPA, ISC, LLC.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah. C-Tech isn't even here, so I'm concerned that we don't, haven't had an opportunity to full discussion of the situation. So, I am going to vote, I'm going to abstain because I don't feel like I have enough information without, I'm not prepared to vote tonight on it.
So, how does that leave us with four of us here?
Well, it takes, it would, it takes...
Majority.
Three votes to pass the, to adopt the motion.
Okay.
You have four members here, you can still...
Okay. All right, just for clarification, and just to your point, I mean, I think it's a valid point, but we had this on our agenda August 11th. We have it on again tonight. If they wanted to come here and speak, they had two opportunities to come and do that, so I appreciate your desire to have them have...
I do understand what you're saying, Lisa. I just think that, you know...
I understand your position, and ultimately, my decision down the line, I mean, I know where I'm leaning, but I just think process is important, that's all.
So, we have a motion and a second to deny the abatement. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
Okay. I feel like I have like a scratchy recipe.
Is there?
No, I have some, I just, like, uh... They will. Did you say will they need one? Um, I don't know.
Good question.
All right. We'll move on to the agenda. Next is appointments and resignations. We need to approve the resignation of Patrick Beauchesnes with our thanks and appreciation as a member of the Clean Energy Task Force.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is to appoint Phil Percilio as a regular member of the Conservation Commission.
I'll move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next is to accept the resignation of Mark McPherson as the town of Simsbury representative to the North Central C-Med Communications Committee with our thanks.
I'll move that. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to approve the minutes of the September 8 meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So, I'm gonna...
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is liaison reports?
No.
What?
I was, I just want to make sure I was there. I was.
Okay.
I'm thinking.
Next is liaison and subcommittee reports. Personnel, Lisa, do you have a report?
Yeah, I do. We had our Personnel Subcommittee meeting tonight at 5:00, upstairs in the Board of Education, to interview, continuing our interview process for Labor Council. We've concluded the interviews we've interviewed before. We've asked town staff to continue checking references and evaluating what the needs are for the years coming forward. They're slightly different than what they've been in the past, now that we've divided union negotiations up so that they won't all come in one massive clump together. So, congratulations for spreading those out. And so, they'll be doing some homework for us, and by the next meeting, we should come to you with a recommendation. We also looked at a job description for a truck driver for the WPCF, and basically, what this is, is a reclassification of a, or, it's a new position, not a reclassification, introducing a T-6 position and not filling a T-7 position that exists. And the reason was because as they looked at what the, what they, the need was, what they really needed was a more truck driver position than a mechanical position. So, they did that. We did, felt that this was based off what the Department of Public Works uses for their truck driver description, so that basically follows the same script as applied to the water pollution control on town. Did you have anything? Did I miss anything?
No.
And did you want to move that tonight?
Yes, we, that was unanimous, both Cheryl and I, but it was unanimous.
Just can we do that without the final union?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Yes.
Would you like a motion to approve the job description?
I will move that, actually.
Thank you.
That we approve the truck driver WPCF job description as written.
I will second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other reports?
Yes.
Yes, Lisa.
We had a busy week. We had our public safety meeting last week, and I want to thank the members for attending. The Simsbury Fire Department's open house is on October 5th from 11:00 to 2:00 at the main firehouse in Hot Meadow. I promised them I'd announce that, so I'm doing that tonight. On October 18th, the fire department will be at Dewey Farm for drills in a live-fire environment as they burn down the house, and they get all the improvements, they check for dangers, materials, make sure there's no exposure risks, so they follow all the state laws, and that will be ready to go. So, if you see a fire there, it is a planned fire, and enables them to practice in a live-fire situation. Mr. Kowalski reported on Operation Save a Life in a Grant they received, allowing them to give 180 smoke and carbon dioxide detectors to residents in Needon, and they're in the process of distributing them.
How do people get a free smoke detector, Lisa?
Well, they are on a list from, Mickey coordinates the list of those who need it and those who are homebound, and they go through social services.
So, someone who just tells social services.
Exactly, and get on that list. And the thing that was nice about these is they have batteries with a 10-year life, so they will actually last longer, so they're excited about that. Ms. Kurtanas of the Farmington Valley Health District reported that they are tracking the Ebola and entrovirus D68, and they have reached out to both private and public schools, and they are very well-prepared in what to look for in terms of symptoms and how to react when a need arise. At the Community for Care meeting, which I was actually very sick and missed, thank you, Mary, for caring for me, the Simsbury Police School Resource Officers, Sergeants May and Kushner, gave an extremely informative presentation on what drugs and substances they are seeing in the community. It was an excellent presentation, eye-opening and informative, and for anyone who's interested in what's out there, I encourage you to watch it. It's on SCTV. It's a wonderful presentation, and I just wanted to reinforce, we, schools are still passing out, Henry James still has them open houses, the Parents' Guide for the Prevention of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use, and it also has a list of local resources, so anyone struggling with those issues has, knows where to turn, where do I go? Easy to find. And then, today, Cheryl and I and the Subcommittee on the Website for the Community for Care met, and we're working on creating a website for community of care that will have a lot of this information and links so that people know where to go, because often people are reluctant to call someone up and say, I have a problem, but they are willing to look at a website or hear a presentation, so we'll put the link from the SCTV, and that'll, we're hoping that we'll have a draft of that in two to three weeks.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
I have one more quick report from Aiding in Disability tomorrow, and I'm sure we can't make it to the different time, is the Senior Wellness Fair at Eno from 9:30 to 11:30, so there'll be a variety of services available for seniors, you know, nursing services,
And I just wanted to reinforce, we, schools are still passing out. Henry James still has some open houses, the Parents' Guide for the Prevention of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use. And it also has a list of local resources. So anyone struggling with those issues has, knows where to turn, where do I go? Easy to find. And then today, Cheryl and I and the subcommittee on the website for the Community for Care met, and we're working on creating a website for community care that will have a lot of this information and links so that people know where to go. Because often, people are reluctant to call someone up and say, I have a problem. But they are willing to look at a website or hear a presentation. So we'll put the link from the SCTV. And that'll, we're hoping that we'll have a draft of that in two to three weeks.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
I have one more quick report from Aging and Disability tomorrow. I'm sure they can't wait to the different time. It's the Senior Wellness Fair at Eno from 9:30 to 11:30. So there'll be a variety of services available for seniors, you know, nursing services, housing, and other pertinent information. So if...
We have two items under executive session. One is the discussion of purchase of one old Drake, old bridge road. And the other is a discussion of enforcement action regarding Fort Apple Lane. Both these items will require action. So I asked the board to go into executive session, but we will come out and we will vote. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that one. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll adjourn to executive session, and then we will return.
It's still only quarter to seven.
I looked at that.
Really?
That's right.
Pretty good.
It was pretty good.
Pretty good work.
Started early and finished early.
That's 8:15. You know, I'm just saying. I need to get home. Blacklist. I need to get home for that.